All right, it is seven o'clock on Thursday, March 14th. And we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting for the city of Albernett. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please rise and join me.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Council Trump.
Hi.
Council Bozenberg.
Here.
Council Sukum, sorry.
President.
Council West.
President.
No, this man, Council Myers is not here tonight.
Does the record reflect that we do have a quorum to conduct business tonight? Any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
I would seek a motion to approve the agenda.
So.
Both by Bozenberg.
Second by Trump.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number five is the Sheriff's Report. So that is page two of your packet. So they required 43 hours were met. So this is from February 8th through March 12th. And there were 23 calls for service. Looks like all pretty standard stuff. Does look like quite a few medicals. So while I'm here, thank you fire departments. I'm sure you all got called out on those as well. Any questions? It does say at the bottom, we can send over to Major Jack Colston. Any questions from Council that you'd like Chris to address? Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. So we have two types of comments in the city of Albernett. Those that are agenda-related and non-agenda-related. We do ask that you limit your comments to five minutes or less. And please state your name and address for the record. Any comments on agenda-related items? If you are on the agenda, this is not the time to talk. This is if you have comments on agenda-related items. So we'll start with agenda-related items. Hearing none, non-agenda-related items. Next item is the Mayor's Report. Surprisingly, I don't have much. So I just, the one thing, I can't go without saying it. Happy Pi Day. I'm kind of a math geek. So for those that don't know, you should know. It was March 14th, 3.14. So happy Pi Day, y'all. I didn't bring any, I do apologize.
I'll fill potato chips.
Council comments. I'm gonna start to my left with Council West.
None at this time.
That's it.
Not at this time?
This moment, man. Council Trump?
Not at this.
All right. That brings us to written reports. And I will recognize Chief Hoover. Oh, hang on, let me get back to my packet. So this does start on page three of your packet. I'll recognize Chief Hoover.
Thank you. As I said, it's a short written report. No major incidents, no issues, no complaints, requests at this time. I did want to make sure you understood an update on our medical protocols. Very briefly described it in the report that it's using CPAP, which is similar to what you would think of using breathing assistance, but it is able to infuse medication. And my medical officer here, he'll let me correct me if I'm way off base. So it's a new service that we provide, but it's a service that is in the state protocols and has been approved and supported by our medical director. And just the, and I don't want to get too many details offline here, but we don't operate just at whim. We are under the direction of a medical director, a local doctor, Dr. Sagers, who gives us the authority and gives us authority through the state. So the state certifies us, and then we have a local medical director. And so this will bring us some compliance. And it'll also be an additional life safety provision that we can do.
Basically, we have an older population in our area now. So don't look at me like that. So I think the biggest thing that we needed to look at is the fact that we have to make sure that we have a way to take care of our patient before an ambulance gets there. And sometimes the ambulance can't get here quick enough. And it puts us in a crisis mode. So with that in mind is the idea of having something to help our patients, especially those that have COPD or CHF. That'd be crucial. We didn't touch on the other part. We've also added some medications. Albuterol is one. We have a little girl here in town. There's others in the school also. But the one little girl here in town, she had an asthma episode about a year ago. And we almost lost her before the ambulance got there. We really had to work to keep her. So with that in mind, we've decided to bring on the albuterol because we have the option to give her the medication that will alleviate that situation very quickly and open up her airway. So that was crucial. So we added that. Glucose was the other thing that we picked up for diabetics. Those are the main ones at this point, I think. We have Narcan coming. Of course, Narcan is needed for overdoses. And it's out here everywhere. Fentanyl happens to be a popular drug at the moment that's being used. And they're inserting it into like Percocet and whatever, and handing it out to people. Kids take it, and the next thing you know, they're overdosed or they could be dying. So we don't want to be in that spot. We want something to take care of that. So basically, that's what we're doing. We're upgrading our abilities to our community. And I think that'll be advantageous for us all the way around and help out the ambulance service also.
So a bit of an apology. Whenever we implement a new service, and especially a new service if it's gonna cost additional dollars, I should've come to you before it was implemented. This has kind of been a work in progress, and then boom, it was done. And so.
Our medical director.
But the cost is minimal. I had Chris order the CPAP machines. And I don't have it all top of my head, but it was less than $300 for everything to get it up and running. And anything that's a one-time use is generally replenished through the ambulance service or the hospitals. So that initial cost is probably the cost on that.
So I'm not super familiar with CPAP. Only like the residential sleep apnea type application. This different than just oxygen? What types of conditions would generally, this is just a curiosity question?
Well, it's different in that it is oxygen-supplied. And then it also has a port to infuse those medications that.
So like the albuterol and those types of things? So you're not standing there doing a nebulizer that takes 20 minutes?
They do that through the breathing. They take the drugs. Right, it's for the asthma, the conditions.
It just alleviates the airway situation really quickly. It opens up the airway, something that's crucial. And we're pushing the oxygen into the system, basically, because it's a forest air in that regard. So that takes care of issues. It saves lives, that's all I'm gonna say.
Oh, that's just a curiosity question.
It's just the easy way to address it. And it's like crazy not to be frightened.
At least hopefully, it would not be used very often. But when it's needed, it'll make the difference.
So the replacement part would be the mask. I assume that goes with the patient, right? If you've used.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The mask.
Not reusable.
That goes, yeah. And then we'll get that replaced by ambulance.
Right.
For the hospital.
Might be a crazy question. What's the shelf life on the drugs? You know?
On what?
On the drugs you administer. What's the shelf life?
On the drugs? What I picked up, they should last for a year before they have to be done. And they're not super expensive either. Like at the trophian albuterol packets today, it's like 25 bucks, I think is the max on them. So it's like, yeah, and I gotta box that.
No, no. We have other items that have a shelf life that may hit that shelf life before we use it because we don't run a thousand calls a year. But we can trade those out with the departments, ambulance service, hospitals that use them more regularly. So we can get refreshed first.
Most of the time, we can use them.
Yeah, we can share with an ambulance service that uses it quicker. So we can hand that off and get that done. It works well.
So beyond that, or that, if you have any questions for me, I'll try to answer some.
I did notice on our claims, we're starting to pay out for the grant, which is good. So we're starting to get that equipment ordered. So that's good to see.
Another one I'll drop off tonight, the big one for the radio.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for coming in. I appreciate it. All right, move on to city administration. So first up will be Public Works.
Yeah, this is in the packet. Water main break that we found kind of revealed that we're missing some kind of critical lines are not lined up on our GIS map of where those mains are. So we're in the process of, when we find these, we remap them. We also put in any kind of water shut-offs that we're finding as well. So if I hitch you up for knowledge of, we found a manhole where it's, you know, why is this here in the middle of the field? You might want to help out. That'd be great. And then, but other than that, nothing else to report this time? Or to add?
There's a lot of information in this report. There are a couple of things that I want to dig into and break down a little bit. So first on page nine, there is mention of getting quotes for some crosswalk signs. So that is a request that I intook from the school. They're just hoping to make crossing in and around the school a little bit more safe. I've seen several other communities that have, they're pretty easy set up from what I can see. But they've got the poles that either have a standalone button or actually the ones that I was looking over Mac's shoulder are nice because the button's built into the pole or attaches to the pole. Hit the button, the little LED lights flash. I was surprised to see, we hadn't quite talked about location. I started looking at a map with Mac that day when he was looking at the quotes because he was getting some clarification on the quotes. So I think we can nail that down. Have we received the quotes?
Yeah, we've received all the quotes.
So I will have that on the April agenda as well as looking at locations because that's something we want to get purchased this fiscal year. So we'll make sure those quotes are on the April agenda. I think we're looking at two different signs. Because the primary concern from the school is they use the baseball diamond and the green space down there for PE classes when the weather's nice and there's not a safe crossing. And then I do know that also on Roosevelt, they have to stage crossing guards to help the kids before and after school. So I think we've got two opportunities to make that a little bit safer. On page 10, there is mention of consideration for city maintenance to take a truck home.
For lunch.
Yep. So I would like to see if we can build a policy out around that. I do have concerns about transparent use of city equipment. I can come up with a couple of examples where I think even taking it home for lunch could cause issues. But again, we'll work together on putting together a policy and how we can bake that out. Part of that for me is who's allowed to take a truck? Is that open to any staff? Is it just lunch? Does it go home overnight? What if the person's starting from City Hall? So there's just, there's a lot of things that I would like to bake out in regards to that request. And again, I know there's no action being asked tonight, but this is a lengthy report. Bottom of page 10 into page 11, the request for the skeleton bucket to sift the compost pile. I will just say, as Council's considering this, I appreciate all the information that was included. The skid loader cost is too low. Skid loaders generally are $100 an hour. That accounts for wear and tear as well as service, the tracks, those types of things. So that does seem a little bit low. For me, if I add in that at $100 an hour, total cost for screening every two weeks, assuming it only takes an hour, then now it becomes $4,239. So it'd take us about two and a half years to pay off the bucket. I'm just curious if us doing this work is really a priority, knowing what else we have on our plates as far as the city is concerned? We do have a service that can do it for us. Chris, do you know if this particular bucket or anything like it is available for rent so that we can try it before?
It is available for rent if we want to try it. The thing is, is that this, using this bucket would be used instead of using the bucket he's using right now, which does not have the ability. All that bucket does is just pick what's there up and put it down. So when he's turning, all he's doing is pulling in, picking it up, putting it down. This would allow him, while he's picking it up, to sort out all of the material that is larger than the dirt. Would allow the dirt to fall. So he's already doing the job. But it would allow that dirt to fall and build up. Because our issue right now, and especially in the past, has been, we have no way to do that. And so therefore, we end up with a bunch of mulch that no one can use or wants. And we have no dirt. And what we're trying to get is dirt. I know, Grant, you work with these machines. What would you say as far as the skeleton versus using a bucket every time? It sounds more efficient from what we've seen.
It would be more efficient than what we have. It's just, yeah, what the cost would be versus whatever we pay now to have it done. Is it really worth it? Is what we need to look at over time? You know what I mean? If it's gonna pay itself off over two years, then, you know, is that worth it to outright own it? Or to continue with the service we have now? Obviously, yeah, it's more efficient, but.
He didn't even mention like with the park. Right now, the park has a large amount of dirt that we're gonna have to sift through some of that to even get that, the larger chunks, out. And that's something that he could do instead of having to hire that out as well. So, I mean, there's more than just the, you know. And for the price, it just seems, you know, $1,900 for the price. I mean, yeah, I can go, we can go rent one to try it out as you're asking. But then we've now added to that price instead of just buying something that, you know, we could do outright.
And conversely, if it doesn't necessarily fit our needs, then we didn't spend that money. And so we'll understand it that way. I would also be curious how long it's actually gonna take? If it takes an hour to turn it, if you're actually trying to sift it out and then separate, how long is it gonna take? And like, like I said, is this a priority with other things that we've got on the plate?
Right, we're just trying to help the community get more dirt. Instead of just turning a compost pile that is producing more compost.
My, I have a, you know, looking over the numbers now, I have a concern because with the time limit on it, when it takes him four hours, and we have the guy come in and sift it and do that.
Four hours, we're getting four hours.
The grinding company.
Grinding company.
Oh, yeah.
How can we do it in an hour?
Well, the grinding company, they're either grinding what we've already got into mulch. And then they stack the pile up. And then we have to eventually move that and transfer that into a smaller pile that can be turned. And with the screening, which is where they take what we have and they screen it, yes, I mean, they can do that once. But it doesn't necessarily equate to that we're going to get dirt from that. That's the problem. They're gonna screen it, but we're still gonna send up a bunch of chunks. So again, you're paying for something that you're not guaranteeing we're going to actually get dirt from, wherewith we use this bucket. And again, I understand it might increase his time a bit. But if we use this bucket, then we can do it as we're already doing what we're already doing.
Well, and then I'm wondering if you'll add more cost because you're gonna have to shake the bucket.
You have to shake the bucket.
You're gonna shake it, so you've got a machine you're using it. You're constantly shaking it. It might be more costly.
Again, we were looking at a way to save some money. So that's why we're putting up for consideration. It's not an actionable item. That's why it's in the report. You know, like I said, if we'd like to rent one, we can definitely look into doing that. And we can just kind of test it out, so.
That I think would be smarter.
There's also mention of potential of getting rid of the tractor for the purchase of another skid loader. I would just mention to Council that tractor is paid for. It is pre-emissions, so you cannot buy one like it. We already have all the attachments for snow and grass, which are what's mentioned for the skid loader. While it's only been used slightly in the last couple of years, I will remind Council that those have been drought years. I know in wet years, the bat wing mower is quite valuable, especially for doing some of the ditches and those sorts of things. Something to keep in mind there. The salt and sander, saying there's a recommendation to purchase a new salt and sander, sell the one we have. I don't think that one's very old. We did just replace the grills with stainless steel grills so that it would last longer. I would like to plan the equipment purchases, you know, around a snow policy. So so far, we only had one snowstorm this year. How much, the purpose of the changeover is so that we could use the dump truck to haul snow. In a normal snow, how much do we actually have to haul? I just don't know if we have enough experience under our belt. And again, based on what can we alleviate with the snow policy? If we have a more efficient route, where are we piling snow? How much are we actually gonna need to haul? So I would like to see that established before we look at changing any equipment. But I mean, that's my opinion on that one. I do want to offer one clarification. My request was misrepresented as far as the no parking signs for Roosevelt Street. So just so Council is aware, we did order these signs. I was in here one day, and city admin and city maintenance were placing an order, as you mentioned, for the faded signs. And I reminded them that we would also, I would also like to do that project to make Roosevelt no parking for the entirety of the street. And I was told at that time that they would just go ahead and order them because we can always use no parking signs. Just so Council is aware, I will be, I need to communicate with the school yet. So I'm gonna have a meeting with the school to discuss the plan. And then we'll be presenting a resolution for Council's consideration before we make any changes to parking regulations along that particular street. So I expect this to be on the May agenda. I've not had a chance to get with Superintendent Dible. I will nail that down. And then I'm also gonna partner with the school on the communication plan. So all this will be done when school is out for the summer. I don't want to disrupt anybody's routines that they have this year. So well, there's only two months remaining in the school year. So we'll address this and get the change made once school is out. Clerk report. Any changes there?
The only change, we were able to finalize the changing of the water accounts. So this has been something that's been a long time coming. Unfortunately, previous processes were to randomly assign account numbers to residents. That doesn't work really well when you're trying to figure out what the next number is. And unfortunately, we've had not only duplicate numbers, but we've had numbers that don't make sense. We were able to finalize that as of just yesterday. So I will be sending out notifications to everyone, putting them on Facebook, basically that, you know, just note your account number may have changed. It will not have any impact. I'll put frequently asked questions of, you know, what if I have the wrong account number with my next check? And will it still go process? It will, as long as we have their name or their address. We can, we'll make sure it's the right place because we check both of those. Again, I always encourage ACH. We do take ACH, there's no charge. We've seen quite an influx of people signing up for ACH. It has made everybody's life a lot easier. And so this is, you know, something that I keep encouraging folks that if you can, sign up for ACH.
There is a note on the clerk's report regarding leasing the north side of City Hall. So that is something that we've talked to. We've actually had a couple of small, local small businesses come to us with some interest. I just don't know if Council's been aware of that. We've not pursued anything, just kind of doing some fact-finding. Obviously, we're still utilizing that space right now. But it is good to outline our options. I did look, and there is, per Iowa code, there is, we would need to establish, if we were to lease that, establish an urban renewal plan. And then it does require competitive bid process. So we would learn a lot if that is something that we decide to do. I'd like to learn. All right, last but not least, the treasurer's report.
The only thing to add to that, right now, again, we're still looking really good as far as our income to expenses is concerned. Sand is complete. That was a very lengthy process this time, as they changed it again. But we did get it, so we're good for another year. The ECO grant is entering into the funding stage. So you will see an influx, plus we have next month and then the next month after that with our final, basically, remaining refunds and everything that were coming in are gonna be coming at that time. So just, and thanks to Council for getting the budget done on time and keeping us off the naughty list that went out today. So that was just a big thank you.
So on that ECI grant, if we don't spend the $100,000, I assume we give it back?
I have a, yes, but I have a feeling we're gonna spend all $100,000 of it. And the only reason is, is while we were probably gonna save some money because we already have the transfer base on there, which they were originally factoring in, which is why they were saying $135,000, where we would basically spend part of that, 35. The thing is, is we still need to build a fence around the back end of that well. And that could be included into our cost. Because we're gonna have to block off the generator somehow. So, but based off the numbers, I've seen the generator installed, everything else like that's gonna be roughly about $85,000. So it's not gonna be much when we're not prepared. I'm just happy we got the grant.
And Council, I apologize, I buzzed through the clerk. Were there any questions on the clerk's report? Any questions on the treasurer's report? All righty, that moves us to the consent agenda. Any changes?
No, no changes.
I did notice on the claims, just for clarification, the top of the claims report says 2924 to 31424. But then on the bottom, where it's got the breakout by fund, it says total paid on 28. Just for clarification, should that be 314?
That should be 314.
So I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda with the modification to the claims report to reflect the total paid as of 31424.
So.
Moved by West?
Second.
Seconded by Sukum. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, we are on page 26. So this is item number, or letter A under new business, review quotes for apparatus repair. I will go ahead and recognize our.
Oh, I'm James. I'm with Swoben Equipment. It's a pleasure to be here and meet you guys finally. If you guys had a chance to look over the quotes that I have sent to Chris, I figure you guys will have questions about them because some of them have a pretty big price on them. So some of those quotes are services per unit. And those, you'd be looking at a yearly service. So if you serve. And those, you'd be looking at a yearly service, so it'd be greasing the chassis, checking diff fluids, topping off fluids as needed, and doing a fuel system and engine system, so engine oil, fuel system, so filters, all that stuff. And I recommend doing those once a year. And those were requested, as well as there were oil leaks and other issues that were also requested quotes by from the fire chief, and I got those filled out and sent to you guys as well. And there's a lot there, and I'd like to start with questions. But if you look at the estimate to do the service on the Pierce fire truck, there is additional add-ons instead of just the service, because it is a two-stroke Detroit. And they, they are fantastic engines, they're fully mechanical. But due to the design of this engine, after a stint for a while, there is a rack inside the heads that control the injectors. So it's not like a typical injection system for a diesel. It is essentially each injector has its own throttle body. And when these engines sit, as the fire trucks do, those will stick. And when they'll stick, they can cause the engine to run away and cause engine damage. So on that quote, there is additional time for an overhead inspection and...
I'm just gonna, that's page thirty, so estimate number six. Nope, you're good. Your notes were super helpful, so.
I tried to fill out the notes as best as I can for any questions.
That was awesome. I do just have one question, just to make sure we have everything. I've got, I'm missing estimate numbers two, three, and four.
I apologize, that was my estimate system.
Nope, that's good, I just wanna make sure that we had everything, so.
Yep. So these are estimates for the services. There are other annual stuff that I have not quoted yet, as well as, say, like the oil pans and the oil leaks. Those are to get these up to tip-top shape, because some of them are leaking and making a mess on the floor of the new fire department. And two of your guys' larger trucks would fail a DOT inspection. So Department of Transportation would quote-unquote forbid this vehicle from driving down the road. As like, the SD seventy, it's a broken park spring, and the park springs holds that truck steady when you set the brakes. So I can see these trucks haven't experienced some love in the last few years, I can tell, and most of...
You're here for a reason, James, that's all we ask.
So I got the engine service and all of that stuff, and that'd be a yearly thing. I'd set that up on a schedule, and I'll take care of all that stuff. And then when it comes time each year, I'll reach out to the fire chief and Chris, and then I'll resend the quotes in, I'll update them if the parts get more expensive. And I'll be just on a yearly rotation for that. And there are some other yearly stuff that will need to be done, such as an air system service, and I'll get those quotes for each truck to you guys as well. But I figure I'd get these quotes here, talk to you a little bit, and then we can continue to add those quotes on there. But the SD seventy had a couple, an oil pan leak, a front main leak that are pretty bad. You wouldn't think they leaked that bad for only having around ten thousand miles. But since those trucks sit, it causes the gaskets to dry up and leak. But I'd like to see if you guys have any questions.
I appreciate that you had an opportunity to get familiar with our equipment and our apparatus. Thank you for doing that. I do just have one, and this just might be a packet thing. So page twenty-six, estimate number ten, does specify it's for truck one thirty-four. It then does say per truck, there's the quote, but then if you look at page twenty-seven, it's got total due of twenty-one ninety-one. I can't find what that matches up to.
Twenty-one ninety-one, oh, sorry, that matched up to the one above.
The one above, yeah.
So my system isn't perfect, but I'm working on it.
No, it's how I put it in the packet.
Okay.
The one, ten, estimate ten's the first one I have.
Trying to get the packet aligned with...
Well, they all had totals on the bottom, so...
I believe it's for...
The SD seventy.
It's probably SD seventy is what it was.
Or it's for the Pierce possibly. I didn't break my, I didn't break my, I apologize.
I have them.
Well, they all have totals on, all the estimates I have have totals on the bottom, so that one just seems to be floating.
Hold on.
Yeah, it's just all the information on that one, cause it to put on the page after that, instead of being attached all on one page there. And there was, the fire chief brought up an intermediate electrical issue on the F-550. And for diagnostic, it's about, I usually put down two hours for diag, so we can figure out what's going on and actually figure out what's actually happening, especially if there's a issue. I just don't wanna throw parts at it. So it's just time for me to look at the situation, verify the issue, and find a way to repair it.
Especially when it's electrical.
Exactly.
You're being generous, so I went to...
Twenty-one ninety-one is, was the estimate eight. It is for, it is for the one thirty-four. And this is for replacement of oil pan, gasket, main seal, spare axle, hubcap gasket, replacement coolant shut-off valve.
We do not have an estimate eight.
It's, again, it's probably because it just, for whatever reason, the scanner didn't cap it in the packet. So I can give you estimate eight.
Could you walk through these photos quick, give us an idea?
Yeah, I sent some of the photos of some of the leaks and issues with the fire trucks, such as, are the photos attached as well?
Yep. Not that I may understand them.
Yep. And bringing up some, the Pierce, it's an older truck from the eighties. It has a transmission leak. It has your power takeoff for the, for the water pump, that is leaking as well. As well as the steering box leak, as you can see right there, that's leaking on the ground. So it's leaking power steering fluid onto the floor. There, we have an oil leak on the back of the head. It could be possibly from the supercharger that sits between the V, or it could be from a number of things in the back of the head running down. And that is making quite a mess on the ground, and that's one of the reasons why that truck would fail a DOT inspection. Because it has a class-three leak, which is a visual leak on the floor. And so I've got some pictures attached for that, where it could possibly come from. Since that engine's a Detroit, they tend to cover themselves in oil. And so what I'd have to do there is I'd put dye into the engine oil, and it'll need to be ran. And I can come back later, inspect where the dye is, and so we can actually find where that's actually leaking. And it's hard to see, because it has hubcaps, the front hubs that hold the fluid in for the bearings in the front axle are leaking, and that's why you see the oil around that hubcap and the bolts. Any questions about those? As you see, there's transmission leaks back there, that's leaking on the ground as well. And that one is, that's a leak on, from the front input seal on the PTO for the water pump. So I have not made quotes for these yet. I was looking to get approval for all the other stuff before I make additional quotes for all this stuff. So we would complete, get the services taken care of, because they have been serviced in a while, it sounds like. Then we'd start working on the leaks. And after those leaks are completed, I will make more quotes for the other stuff that needs still be done on the trucks. And some of the trucks have exhaust leaks as well. And I did label one as emergency, I mean, safety concern, safety. I recommend that would be the first thing to be done, it's on SD seventy, it is the broken park brake spring, a tail light's out, as well as there is a fuel leak from the generator. But a lot of this work is gonna be more of a one-time thing, is just to get these trucks up to running condition. Especially for the nature of these trucks, the way that they're used, they're a little bit higher maintenance than the other vehicles. Especially the Pierce, just because it's an older truck, and it's a different breed of truck. So that's why the services are more expensive, because in the services, you pull the valve covers off, inspect the fuel rack, make sure it lets run smooth. If it's not, the injector would have to be rebuilt, because like I was saying earlier, if there's an issue with the fuel system, these injectors, when it's, trucks in the off position, the injectors sit at the fully open. So when you start these up, if the injector's sticking, it will cause the engine to overred and eventually tear itself apart. As well as, there's also time for inspection of the blower seals, because this engine can also eat up those blower seals and cause the engine to consume oil and overred as well. So that inspection, I'd recommend twice a year. Just inspect it, just for how much the unit sits. And DOT inspections will be done with the services. So you're looking at two-point-five hours for the service, an hour for the DOT inspection, which required by government, the Department of Transportation, requires one of those inspections once a year, minimum. I would recommend two inspections, because a one year between inspections is quite a gap, especially for what these trucks are used for. So I recommend a lot of people do it twice a year, some people like doing it three times a year. But twice a year gets it down to six months, so it's a good spot. Just because my rate for a DOT inspection is one-twenty-five in one hour for DOT inspection. And an extra hundred and twenty-five dollars a year, really compared to a hundred-and-fifty-dollar tow bill or any issues of failures, I think it's a, it's a good payoff. And that's when I would do...
Catch things sooner than let them suffer, yeah.
As well as during that second DOT inspection, I would recheck the fuel system on the Pierce there. I apologize, it's been walking a little fast.
No, you're good. Any questions?
Yeah, are these trucks safe to drive yet?
You don't drive anyway, Bernie, you're alright.
Well, Craig and Curtis tried to kill me once, I don't know, that's okay.
I have seen a lot worse trucks on the road, but being for what these units are used for, and they go above the speed limit, they have hard braking, I, they are safe to, safe, the issues do need to be addressed.
He's not gonna stick his neck out and say they're safe.
They should be serviced.
They should be serviced and they should be maintained.
I got that.
At a very good level.
And you're not gonna get a fire truck towed for a hundred and fifty dollars, nope.
There's our main candidate, some subject around, so.
And I make it easy for you guys, because I come to you. If you guys have an issue, I'll just show up, I'll look at it, you guys will get a quote for your next meeting, and then the leak's me addressed. I also wanna bring up, if there was, say, emergency issues, like a tail light out, other issues like that that need to be addressed immediately, I wanted to see if we could set up something for that, could be through Chris.
Chris has authorization.
Because like, say, that park spring, that should have been like done yesterday. And other issues like that, like emergency issues.
Good thing we're on a meeting today, then, isn't it?
So I wanted to make sure we can figure out a limit for price for something, an issue like that, that needs to be addressed pronto, just because these trucks are on call and those issues need to be fixed. Some issues need to get fixed immediately. So I wanted to see if we can get something figured out, if we wanna do some system like that. But like, say, the oil leaks, those would be like quotes, and those can be addressed later. But like, say, wheel bearings backing off, stuff like that, a loose wheel, brakes are pulling, stuff like that would be something that needs to be addressed immediately. And I can give a quick estimate to Chris and get that stuff taken care of.
If it's in the budget, so, budget talk.
Yes.
I can figure out a way to get this paid for.
Well, so...
We could do, depending on how much you all wanna do right now.
So speaking of, I went through estimates, one, five, six, and ten are for DOT inspections. So Ron, keep me honest, I've got one thirty-four, one thirty-five, one thirty-six, and one thirty-nine. That's everything but the medical truck, correct? I'm not good with the truck numbers yet, so it's one thirty-one is the medical truck. Alright, so DOT inspections on the four fire apparatus is three thousand sixty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. Those are for the, just the regular maintenance and DOT inspections. There were repairs, estimate number seven, which is in your packet, were repairs on one thirty-four. That's the five oh five forty-nine. Estimate eight is not in your packet, but the totals are. So this is also for one thirty-four for repairs. This is oil pan, main seal, axle hub, cap gaskets, those leaks that he was mentioning. That's the two thousand one ninety-one. So you'll see the total in your packet. There were, estimate number nine is repairs on one thirty-five for, and that is the, it's not a two-stroke, what'd you call it, two-cycle?
It is two-stroke, you're right.
Two-stroke, alright.
Yeah, it's a two-stroke Detroit diesel. They're, they're fascinating engines, they're really good engines, but they're an old, it's an old breed, so it's significantly different than a modern engine.
So that is estimate number nine, which is four eighty-six thirty. And then the diagnostics for the electrical on one thirty-nine is the two-hundred-and-fifty for his hourly rates.
And I would like to, that is just to inspect and find the issue. That is not gonna be the cost of where we're actually doing the repair.
Just the diagnostics.
And the parts and all that stuff, it's just, the two hours is to give you guys a good idea. It'll give me a good idea to figure out what the issue is. If there's more time for diagnosis, I'll ask Chris, and then I can ask you guys, so I can continue diagging it. Because two hours gives you a good idea of what's going on most of the time. And then you can really build a better estimate for what actually needs to be done. Or approval for more time will be needed.
So I've got a total with the estimates that we have in hand of six thousand four ninety-four thirty-two. So now, what were you saying about budget, Chris?
I said we can make that work. If you guys want to move forward. Anything else, I'd have to take it case by case. We may have to push it to next fiscal year. But right now, we can, we can handle, you know, that whole amount. I know, three months, not terrible.
Like, are they taking three months to do?
Yep, so this will be spread out over a month or two, so the services will come first. And then the oil leaks and stuff like that. The overhead inspection of the Pierce will be done when I do the service, because I will not want to touch that truck before I do an inspection on that. I do not wanna take the liability of touching that engine and having it tear itself apart.
We also note that Ron will be working with us very closely to the chief to make sure of when vehicles are taken in and out of service. We're gonna work on a schedule on that, because we can't have vehicles all at once.
Yep, I will, it'll be one vehicle at a time. And it will be reaching out to you, the fire chief, as well as I'll be putting notes on the windows and stuff like that, in case one of your guys' operators try to use it.
Run off with it.
Yep, and then most likely also I'll disconnect the batteries as well when I use, when I'm working on it, so that they cannot start it.
Ron? Thoughts?
Is the, then when you're, where you're working on these, is the fire station?
Yes, I am mobile, come to you guys. It could be done inside, and ours could be done outside as well.
It just wasn't built as a major repair shop.
Yep.
So there's other conditions code-wise for major repairs. So if you're tearing down the engine or something, the building wasn't built for that.
Yep, so like, say that some of the extremely major repairs, those will most likely have to be outsourced, just because your building is not allowed, but I can also, I'm mobile, I can do everything outside as well. So everything that I can do can be done inside or outside, rain or snow.
So everything on these lists, that's totaling the six thousand nine forty, sixty-four, six thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-two cents can now be done right now without outsourcing out, just to basically everything up to par.
And I will tell you guys, I can diag, I can diag stuff if it's something that I cannot do with, on the premises, I will tell you what's going on, and then I can recommend a good place to take that. Say if the transmission, depending on the transmission, you need a full rebuild, because I could full transmission, I could bring it back to my center of operation, I can rebuild that and reinstall the transmission. It all depends on where you guys, how you guys wanna do that.
And whether or not we wanna go to that with these strange things.
Yep, but my clean, I do, I do a good job cleaning up, like, before I do anything, especially with some nice new cement, I lay out an oil mat below the truck where I'll be doing the work. I bring my own stuff to clean up, so it will be looking like I was never there.
Any other questions from council? Sounds like this is money that's been saved over the years by not doing this, so...
And like I said, once this stuff is addressed and taken care of, maybe some of those faults where we find more issues, like the electrical issue, the oil leaks for that, for the Pierce, will be quotes, after that stuff is all taken care of, there I will make more quotes for the exhaust leaks, some of them are the oil leaks and all that stuff, until these are up to tip-top shape. And then after they're back up to par, you'll just be looking at your regular maintenance.
Every six months?
So, nope, every six months will be the inspection.
Oh, okay.
The engine, the engine, so the services will be only done once a year. The, the, how do I say, the air system services that I have not quoted yet, but I will get those quotes to you. The, uh, the, how should I say, the air system services that I have not quoted yet, but I will get those quotes to you, that'd be done once a year. So any of the servicing, so the maintenance, the PM maintenance will be done once a year. And I recommend inspections done twice a year. And on that second inspection for the Pierce, that is when I'd also re-inspect the vouch, the, the fuel system. As well as remove the hat off the blower, inspect the blower for oil leaks.
We will get through this first. Uh, one thing, James, that we may work on is with that annual maintenance, whether we do, do it in one chunk? Like, I mean, cause this is a big chunk, or do we, do we work out a schedule where then that's spread out over-
Yep, we can, uh, we can spread them out, say like one unit a month or something like that, one unit every two months. So we can keep them rotating in, so that it's not all at once, it'd just be one truck a month per se, if you wanna knock it out in the beginning of the year. And just have them to be done with, as well as, and then after that, we just do inspections once a month, so we can keep them rotating.
We'll tackle that when we get there.
Yes, but this is the stuff I would recommend doing off the bat, just to get, especially the services, get those done first. And then we can put those on a PM schedule to have those done, rotate it through once a year.
Any other questions? Well, hearing none, uh, rather than piecemeal this out, I would seek a motion to approve, give a second. The eight estimates with Swoboda equipment repair for a total of six thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-two cents.
Sure will.
Move that, Trump?
Seven.
Second from West, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
And I'd also like to bring up one more thing. Uh, the, the business plan for my business in the next year or two is we'll, I will be most likely obtaining the shop for some of the bigger work that needs to be done. So then, some of the bigger work can come to the shop here, in the year or two. But for now, it is strictly mobile, the business, until then.
Okay.
Yeah, so, in due time, there'll be a place where if you don't want the work done on your guys' property, it will be able to come to my property and I'll have it done.
Well, good luck with that. Sounds exciting.
Yes.
Yeah, Ron got your quotes really good, looking at them and explaining really well, so.
And if you guys need me to come to each meeting about quotes and we talk about it, I'm totally fine with that, so. But I work early tomorrow, so I'm gonna head out. Uh, if you guys have any questions, ask through Chris. Chris has my contact if you guys wanna reach me directly. So, yeah, even if you guys have any questions about your own stuff, just give me a shout, so.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Alright, glad to meet you guys. You guys have a good night.
You too.
Have a good night.
Alright, we're on to eleven B, which is discuss IT support.
Um, so a little bit of background on this, um, I received a, um, invoice from the mail and I thought it was junk, so I didn't open it at first. Um, but it turns out that this is a program for Webcare that was originally set up by Mike Givens to, uh, basically look at our, um, antivirus, daily backups, monitor event logs, drive space change, hacker checks, and monitor windows. Um, we weren't, we thought when we canceled the service with him to continue the website, that was it. But apparently he still had this running in the background. He charges twelve hundred a year, so we went out and I was able to get one other quote. Um, for a service that we just recently used, because, um, turns out Fairfax was using them as well. And we needed to be able to leak to the computers so they could talk to each other to use QuickBooks. And they really came out and then, so I basically presented this to them to see what they would come up with for an annual. And they presented their quote as well. So the question is, is do we continue with using Mike Givens as our support for these items? Or do we go with, um, this other provider, um, NSC, the Network Computer Solutions? And have them take over? Mike would, Mike's already said he's impartial either way and it would just, you know, he'd remove all the software he has on our computers right now.
So this place south, they've got five PCs marked here, and I see four on Mike's?
Correct, because Mike wasn't aware that we had purchased the new PC over here for, um, for Hannah, so that she could have QuickBooks on her computer.
Is that gonna affect his price, you think?
I imagine.
I imagine it would.
My other concern, um, you know, this is an annual agreement. I know we can do a lot of this in the background, but we don't, we don't ever see him, I mean, he doesn't come in and check on how things are going or communicate really well. So when it comes to IT and especially things like your antivirus and making sure we're not being hacked, I think you need someone who's gonna be involved and active. And I do know we got support, like he's mentioned, we got support from this Network Computer Solutions, uh, for some other things.
And is Fairfax happy with these people?
Very. They're, they're used to working with cover man, but that's kinda my key thing, and they're not someone so close to home. Cause you have, you have to understand, he can access our computers at any time.
Is this a modern or one-man shop down there, do you know?
So can I? Now, he doesn't, and he says that he doesn't unless we actually give him permission. But again, if he needed to, to stop the virus or something like that, so.
Do you have a quote? Can you put that up?
Oh, sorry.
What's their quote? Sorry, the quote from, you're right, we should verbalize, Network Computer Solutions for five PCs for annual is nine hundred dollars. And with Webcare annually for four PCs is twelve hundred dollars. Uh, please do note, team, that this did renew on January one, so we would have to prorate, uh, for the first few months. But the, um, so we, we do owe him some, and then the Network Computer Solutions would be dated current, so that we start in March. Or I guess whenever we tell them to start.
And you said they've, they've done some work for us already?
Yeah, they've already linked our two computers and they actually gave me the ability to, if I-
Remote.
Well, I can remote into this computer.
Yeah.
Um, say I'm out on a conference or something like that, I can, so if she doesn't know how to do something, I can log on and I can show her exactly what to do and act like I'm there. So.
Personally, I think they have changed. Yeah, it hasn't been an easy change.
That would save us money in there naturally, so.
Flashe and counsel? Uh, a, a motion to move to Network Computer Solutions of Eastern Iowa for antivirus and system health monitoring for nine hundred dollars a year. In replacement of our current Webcare contract. Motion by Bozenberg.
Second.
Second by Sukka. Any other discussion?
Uh, when will you want this to go into effect?
Great question. April one, probably a nice cover. Good call. Do you need to amend your-
That's what I say, you're admitting it.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll, I'll amend the motion. No, you don't amend the motion, somebody else does. You amend it.
I do, I do amend it. Um, I will amend, uh, the motion to be effective date, go first.
I second the amendment.
Motion by West, second by Trump. Think I gotta do that one first, right?
We have more on there, and let Trump.
Any other discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of starting the contract on April one, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. That motion carries. Back to the original motion to change our web security provider to Network Computer Solutions. All those, or was there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. That motion carries. Alright, review water software quotes for the fire station, so we are on page forty-four of your packet.
Can we go, do that, okay, so, um, I was asked to kinda look at, I think we had, someone rented the space that had some issues with the toilets. Is that what it was, Chris?
Uh, toilets and just hardness in the water.
And, um, come to fire, it was the hardness of the water that's causing gum to be buildup on the enters of the toilets. Um, so I was asked to kinda get some quotes, look around. I was able to get Culligan and, and Ekin, and Ekin, um, to come out and take a look. They both agreed that it would help with the toilets running all the time and, um, help put longevity into our heaters. They also go into our coolers as well, so it should help with making those, cause it's all fed, they're the same system.
Yeah.
Otherwise, um, I did have one, other one lined up, but he was ill and wasn't able to come out and get a quote to the- Damn it.
I'd say there's Mick Layer out here too, but there?
Yep. Um, so, everyone that's came out, um, all three of them have came out, I was only able to get two quotes. Said that the softener would be the best way to go. I don't see it costing a lot once we get the install done, because the amount it's being used, it'd regenerate more than it would be being used. Uh, so this all purchased would probably be once a year, I would assume. I could, I mean, obviously it's fabricated, but I don't see it being that much, yep, um.
So I know we, we wash trucks as well, it, would this be all, all water in the building?
No, so, um, this would be just water going to the utilities.
Nice, okay.
So, um, it would feed the three bathrooms, one of them has a shower in it, the, um-
Kitchenette?
Kitchenette.
Laundry, laundry.
Yeah, it would feed the laundry line. Yeah, we have a washer for our care.
Definitely laundry care.
And, um, it would feed the three heaters that we have.
Feed the, for the end floor heating.
End floor for the services, utility services.
The fact that it might prolong the life of that system three or four.
Yeah, cause it's just almost not cheap.
They were saying, if we had to replace one heater right now, it was between two to four thousand dollars for that heater, for one, and we have three of them. So it should help prolong that.
This would be a commercial grade two, right?
Yes, this would be, yeah, this would be to what we need, um, I believe. So I thought Culligan put in there what it would be.
It sounds like their select plus.
Yep, select plus metered softener. Um, and talking with, um, Ekin, same thing, their luxury on demand was about the same size, so.
Do you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, you asked about if it's all water, that the, it's all the potable water, which, uh, the fill station for the trucks and the hose connection there is not, wouldn't be softened.
Right.
Okay.
The, it doesn't separate the outside spigots, like, you know, if you use those to water grass or something. Those are all interconnected at this point.
Okay.
And, and I don't think any of the, the two that gave you the bid, uh, quoted separating them out.
No.
Just putting a loop in, tapping into the line there.
Yep.
That helps. I, I didn't know how it was all plumbed together, if we could even separate it.
So the hardest part about it is when they plundered, they put it all on the wall, so some of it's not as easily accessible as what it would be in some other buildings, possibly, you know. But yeah, it would be, the water service would be just for, um, our regular services, it wouldn't be for filling the trucks, washing the trucks.
Does look like Culligan also provided a rent option. I mean, in my experience, these usually last, they're, they're pretty simple pieces of equipment. Where it's probably best to just purchase.
Unless, you know, I don't know, they make better ones, I'm just, this one thrown out of your rent, a lot of times the rent goes towards the purchase of it in a year. So you can try it for a year to make sure it's gonna do what you want.
From what they told me, I believe, um, it was just to rent it, like, there wasn't like a rental owner, rent to try or anything like that.
Okay, they don't do that.
No.
Is it, what's the Ekin quote, is that a buy outright?
That's a buy outright, yep.
Okay.
So if we, um-
Rent will pay off in about four and a half years.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good buyer.
Either way we go, I would, we would be able to get a softener put in if one went out, build a plumber, or it'd be redone and everything moved out of the way, so I don't know. How hard that would be, if that would be something like back to do, or we would need the actual plumber to put in a new softener. But they all recommended that we put one in.
I like that Culligan gave us the numbers, that helped a lot.
You could plum that, so you could just buy a sharp bite on it after, just begin putting it in and out once you get to a too many situated. I would, in doing that, I'd make sure there were shut-off valves before and after.
Yep, they would be putting shut-off valves in, they did mention that, so that way it could be isolated if needed.
Was there an installation cost from Ekin, or is that sixteen, the sixteen hundred?
That's sixteen hundred installed.
Oh, right there, to provide an install. So the Ekin quote is for one thousand six hundred, the Culligan quote, the equipment is one thousand six hundred, and then two hundred dollars for the installation. So they're at eighteen hundred, uh, with the option to rent for twenty-nine dollars a month.
Now, is that just an, a normal install, or, I mean, we're gonna have to have a plumber out there to change some pipes, aren't we?
Nope, they would be able to handle all of it. They'd be able to run a new line over to where it needs to be. I don't know if you've been in there, in that back room?
Yeah, I've been, I can't.
Um, they would be putting in against the west wall, or east wall, yeah. Yeah, it's all plastic, the plastic tubing, so.
Shouldn't be hard.
Nope.
Any other questions?
I believe we go with Ekin and buy a water softener for sixteen hundred dollars.
Motion by Trump? Second by Sukka. Any other discussion? Chris, we have budget?
We've got budget for it.
Alright, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Alright, this brings us to item eleven B, special event request for the car show, and we'll recognize Mr. Bozenberg.
Alright, uh, there was an initial meeting to start planning, uh, for the car shows this coming summer, spring. Uh, between the Fire Association and Alliance Club, uh, as we worked together last year to do that. So, um, at the meeting, I said, well, I was gonna bring stuff down to Chris anyway for, for my report, and so I would put it on the agenda and I'm not really the spokesperson for it, but, um, the actual application, uh, I didn't do it last year, but I'm understanding that it required some insurance, it required, you know, all the information. The, the general information would be the same, the layout, uh, the request for the street closings and that. Uh, and, uh, we will get that application, I, in writing and paper for that special event. We wanted to make sure that, uh, city was still, uh, on board with that, uh, show. And, uh, we wanted to get that date in there, so that we didn't have conflicting applications come in.
And it's always the first or second weekend.
Father's Day weekend.
Father's Day weekend, uh-
I think it's June fifteenth, and I think it's Saturday, and sixteenth would be the, uh-
Rain date.
Rain date.
Okay.
Yep, June fifteenth. And you can expect to probably have two hundred and fifty or more cars here that day, and a large car.
Good.
As long as you guarantee the win.
We did it last year, we pulled it off.
Somebody asked me if we're gonna have one again this year, I think so, yes.
So just clarification, so this is just to block that date off in case any other applications came in?
Well, get consensus that we.
But it's worth planning.
City has support for that, uh you know. I don't think we had any uh major complaints. We had some things we want to correct internally as far as the flow of the registrations and that. But uh I think it went well and I think that the city supports it, the community supports it, so.
Did you, you mentioned something about the application or the checklist, making sure there was a way for emergency vehicles to get through? Is that what you're?
We will, yeah, we would do that uh.
You'll you'll handle that?
That's something we will address to make sure that um all those things are addressed, but.
We did that last year too.
But uh so I don't have any application if if we need to fill that out and get the contact information. I don't have that paper application.
That's a thirty day before, so I mean, by the May meeting, you guys should be should be sitting really well. I don't want to speak for council, it's one of my favorite events of the year. You guys do a great job of partnering. I know it does impact the bank. You guys do a great job partnering with the bank and the school and just making sure everybody's aware. So um I don't, I don't see any issues. Um that's one of my, I look forward to it every year, so. Anything else from council?
I'm looking forward to all your hard work, it's fun.
So we'll uh we'll get that uh the information that we need to have filled out and we'll mix ourselves, find the right people to get that completed and get it to you.
Let me hug you up.
The sooner the better, more than a month. I think we, it was last minute or last meeting at the last time that uh just getting that. We were new at last.
You learned a lot last year. I've seen Vern a binder, so.
I took notes finally, I know what I'm doing.
It'll be easier the second time around, right?
There's a method to the matters.
Do you, do you want anything official from us? Is the thumbs up good?
Um whatever, however official you can make it, that would be good.
I don't think we can motion, but I think you've got, you definitely have our support, so. We've all made note of the date.
All right, well, I'm standing up now and that's the last thing I have on the agenda, so you know.
Appreciate you being there.
Thanks for coming, Ron.
Thanks for having me. All right, eleven E, resolution twenty-two-four dash five, Shalista Platt, fourth edition. We are on page forty-six of your agenda. So again, this is within the two mile radius of city limits. It is. Quick zoom, it's like it's out on Sutton Road and Indian Bridge Road out out around there. Looks like they're adding, here, if I can do it really quickly. Three lots, lot one, lot A, and outlot A. Looks like they're just subdividing.
Does that allow you to find a permit?
It must be, so there's something on there on page.
Twenty-seven three.
Um there's more of them where it noted buildings.
Yeah, it's forty-eight at the bottom.
Yes, it was not super easy to read, but. Yes, the bottom left-hand corner shows you the machine shed and other things. Again, these come to us, they're within the two mile radius. But I don't foresee an impact to future development. Any questions? If not, I seek a motion to approve, resolution twenty-two-four dash oh-five, Shalista Platt, fourth edition.
So.
Moved by Sukup. Second by Bozenberg. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. All right, old business, item A, Methodist Church alleyways. So if you recall, I believe it was at our November meeting, could have been December, I don't quite remember. Uh we've, we got the request from the Methodist Church. They currently own the entire city block. There are two alleyways that run through their property. Um and it was actually one of those where honestly, I think both sides thought this was taken care of. And we found out that maybe it didn't get taken care of the way that it needed to. And so how do we, how do we get this taken care of? So step number one was this had to go to our planning and zoning committee. So you will see in your packet on page forty-nine, the written report from planning and zoning in support of vacating. Oh, and I do apologize, uh are are you representative for planning and zoning, Mr. Carver?
No, I'm on that committee, but I'm I'm not here to speak.
Oh.
Nope, everything's good.
Okay, perfect. Um so yes, as you'll note in their written communication, unanimous decision supporting the vacation of those alleyways. Um as noted, it helps that the the church has that entire block otherwise. So that's step number one. Um any questions on the recommendation from planning and zoning? All right. Step number two, uh according to uh our ordinance, number one thirty-seven dot oh-three, we do have to set a public hearing uh before we can dispose of these alleyways. So that is item twelve A, sub-bullet two, is I would ask council to set a public hearing for Thursday, April eleventh at seven P M to, for the vacation of the alleyways at the, on the Methodist Church property.
How moved we set public hearing in April eleventh?
Motion by Bozenberg. Second. Second by Sukup. Any further discussion? That is our next regular council meeting, uh I'll have quorum that night. Anybody know if they're gonna be gone? Will we publish this? All right. Um all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. All right, to help speed up that process, uh what we'll be able to do then in April is public hearing quickly followed by a resolution, uh that will be on the same agenda, uh if we choose to move forward with this. So as part of that resolution and according to our ordinances, so according to ordinance one thirty-seven dot oh-six, as well as Iowa code three sixty-four dot seven, the city cannot dispose by gift. So this must be, that we do have to put a fair market value on the property. So I I did some research. What I found is that a lot of cities will do by square footage and then set a price per square foot. Based on my measurements from the assessor site, it's about three thousand two hundred and sixty square feet for the two alleyways. I went out and looked, again, fair market value on something like this. It's it's not as though anyone else could go buy it. Because so a lot of what I read was, well, you could list it with a realtor to get fair market. You can look at comparable, well, this this isn't any kind of lot or anything like that. So here's what I got for you. The last commercial lot in in town to sell sold for three dollars and seventy-five cents a square foot. So that's commercial. The last residential lot sold for three dollars and ninety cents a square foot. But that isn't a new development, I'm just being fully transparent. The last city purchase, when the city purchased the green space next to, or what is now the Fire Department. So it was green space next to our wellhouse. We we bought two parcels from Rex Naylor that we paid a dollar a square foot for those. So if we're looking fair market value, now that was in two thousand eighteen. But again, I'm gonna be really honest, I'm not looking to make money off of this. We just need to be able to say what fair market value is on something like this. With that said, we have several of these in town. I'm not looking to vacate any more than this. This one's really clear cut because they own the property. But if we were to get another request or to pursue this, again, we're probably setting a precedent with what direction we go if we're if we're choosing a commercial rate, residential, or with the city purchase rate, so.
And how much have we invested in attorney fees?
Um we, we are about thirty-five hundred into attorney fees. Some of that is for us to learn the process. So some of that's then.
A sub-cost.
It's information that we can then reuse. Um most of it, I would say probably twenty-five hundred of it was the discovery on the deeds and those types of like the the history of the property on whether it had even been transferred before. So at the dollar a square foot, that would that would basically cover that cost. And we could go look, that's just what I found.
But if we happen to do this again in ten years and everybody's, um the council's changed, you know, we're gonna have to, you know, if anybody would happen to do this again, we're gonna basically start from scratch.
In in what regard?
It's not like we've got long memories here sometimes on what we've learned.
It's true, but a lot of it came down to helping us craft the resolution. Uh there's a quit claim deed that can go into it, those types of things. So just kind of that, the background of the process. I will say that we needed some clarification on our ordinance because it referenced that we had to do this by ordinance, which even the lawyer was like, that's kind of circular and doesn't make a whole lot of sense, so. That kind of stuff, uh to your point, Joe, I think will stick because it'll be reflected in the the resolution that we drafted. So we should have that for reference. I would recommend we go no higher than the dollar per square foot. I mean, I don't know what else we would, we have no interest in these tracks. And even going forward, if there were others that we were looking to vacate, it's it's similar. You're you're, these happen to be pretty extensive here, on most lots, what, five hundred square feet? Like, it's it's just not gonna be a lot.
So let's hope.
May I speak?
Yes, please.
Well, just to be clear, uh so.
Can you introduce yourself, introduce yourself for the council?
I'm David Mahachek, forty-two seventy-six North Albert Net Road, north of town. And I am chairman of the industrial council for the United, or the Albert Net Methodist Church.
Thank you.
Chris and I have talked about this extensively, of course, as you might imagine. And I I appreciate what you said about the attorney fees because we're on the same page there. Because I definitely definitely feel this has been a learning experience for you as to how to proceed with these in the future. And that that should have a real value to you. Well, when you speak of charging a dollar a square foot, uh not that that is an unreasonable fee, but this property is, for all practical purposes, valueless to you. I hadn't expected quite that much, frankly. And would that also, that would be the total then, that would include the attorney fees?
Correct, yes, so this would be the total sale price.
So what I'm hearing is thirty-two hundred and sixty dollars to vacate the alleys.
I, my recommendation to council is no more than that. Um but where I'm at, Dave, so we we have to sell for fair market value. And while in this instance, you're, yes, there is no value to the city. But if we look at, we've got alleys that run behind several residences. If we had to split that up into smaller chunks and offer those to the residents, we we would almost have to, not necessarily, but honor the same price. So just trying to figure out what fair market value is on something like this. And so I was just trying to go based on what we've, what we've seen around town. So I had the commercial price, the residential, and then what the city paid for that that tract of land. So discretion to council, it could be less than that, uh just to be transparent. We are essentially defining fair market value on ground that otherwise really holds no value. Planning and zoning has a question.
It's it's worthless property to anybody else. It has no value. There is no fair market value to an alleyway cutting across that piece of property.
But there could be to the alleyway like that runs behind the school, for example.
But that's not that.
I think we're quite unique in the fact that we have a a square block, which kind of makes it moot because we have no desire or need for alleys on our property. And we would would like to get this resolved if we want to add on an addition or something, we don't find ourselves building in an alley.
Oh, no, absolutely.
And I would just like to speak that I do believe that the church does add a lot to the community as far as you add a lot to the community. It's not like you have no value. The church itself does do a lot to the community. We have lots of members that go there, you know, it is something, a valued resource in our community. So just wanted to throw that out, that yes, you do have a value in that.
So the other thing I'll say is not something council necessarily has to decide tonight. We will have to build it into the resolution, so we can do, uh fill in the blank at the April meeting. I was just trying to get a kickstart on it. I can send, again, this is in regard to Iowa code. So there's there's little we can do as far as, I mean, it has to be at a fair market value. I don't know, again, we're not gonna hire a realtor. I don't know how else to define fair market value than looking at comps uh within the city, so.
Well, as Jim and I have both commented, it'd be real hard to put any value on that where it's not accessible, really.
I know.
What would you do with it?
I would, I I understand where you're coming from because there there's no value to it. But also, there's no value, you know, for another alleyway for us in the city. But if that person wanted it, it is of value to them, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Is there a difference between looking at it from a standpoint that it's a non-para church versus me having an alleyway behind me as an owner?
From an Iowa code standpoint, no. The only differentiation they make is that we could give by gift uh to another government entity. So if it were, um I don't even know, the school, I think the school is considered. So we could gift to another government entity. But there is nothing in the Iowa code about nonprofits.
Okay.
Anyway, we can do it case by case for sure. I was just, again, I'm just drawing out information, um so to their, to their point, they have the whole block. It is no value to anyone else. Whereas if we're looking at the ones that are between homes and you either split it between or offer it to one or the other, that value changes. So um totally up to the council, I was just presenting the the facts that I found, so. I am, I am not set one way or the other.
I think this is a unique situation, you know. You know what I'm thinking, I'm sitting here thinking a quarter foot and be done with it, you know, and give you, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, if we can't give it to you, we got something for you. But just to give.
It'd also be a benefit for the city to not have line buildings on that property.
It makes your property worth more.
If you. It would enhance the value of our property.
Probably the title's a lot, yeah.
What you originally mentioned was to set a precedent for going for future, whether it's five years, ten years down the road. I don't feel like you necessarily were asking to set that a hundred percent. I feel like we can make it based on a scenario, again, if we call it unique versus not unique. Some people say it's worth nothing, some people say it's worth something. I feel like for each scenario, we can make it its own. So in this case, I feel the same way. If you say a quarter square foot, whatever the case is, I don't think we necessarily vote on it now. We didn't build it into the resolution, but I think you have to take into consideration both sides of it. Like I said, you, someone could say it's valueless, someone could say it has value. So I think you kind of play it by ear. You just originally posed, do you set the precedent? Yep, again, you know, going forward, is there a value that we need to stick to with that with that fair market value? So I think you can kind of play it by ear and based on the scenario.
Yeah, I don't think we need to recoup our money.
Right.
Because it's a learning experience for us. We we all learn some from failures, you know, every every failure, there is a learning curve, so, you know.
Oh, that, what we learned, we're able to reuse, for sure. So this this isn't even about um recouping legal fees. It's just from an Iowa code standpoint, we do need to show, write a reason to the value that we came up with. It's just from an Iowa code standpoint, we do need to show, write a reason to the value that we came up with.
That's what I'm standing. I think the, the draft of resolution will give us a little more time to think about it.
Okay.
So we'll leave on the resolution the amount blank.
So basically, we'll put it as an agenda, we'll do the, the cost as an agenda item before that, and then we'll do the resolution, and we'll be left on the blank.
For next month.
Correct.
That work for you, Dave?
Make it work. Understandably, I'll need a number to take my peoples.
Yep. Well, I think what I'm hearing is, for sure, no more than the dollar square foot. So, you know, three thousand two hundred and sixty doesn't sound like council's got the appetite to even go that high. But if you wanna shoot them up, I mean, this is max dollar. I would, I would feel comfortable that that's gonna be, that that's for sure a max dollar, if that helps. Because, yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna drag this out any longer than we need to, so. Do you have any other questions?
No, no, I, like I say, we are a church, and money is a real issue, so we appreciate any consideration you give to us.
The benefit to the city would be to remove the liability.
Oh, well, and I'm gonna be honest, I came in tonight ready to do it for a dollar, but then the more I read the code, we have to assign that fair market value. So, yeah, it's just gonna come down to what that, what that looks like. We need to be able to justify, and so what I've seen from the other cities is it's by per square foot, so.
Who do you think you would sell those alleys to?
Oh, the, not yours, but any of the others throughout town. We've, we've gotten requests, so there is a property that actually has a structure that sits within an alley, and they were looking to relocate, and they can't sell their property because they don't own the piece that their garage sits on. So we actually do receive requests quite frequently to, to vacate alleys on with, for personal reasons.
Well, that's, that's news to me. I thought this was the first time.
We've never done it, so this is the first time we're following through on the process, in my experience.
It was years ago, the council agreed to let them do it, you know, encroach on it. And then it's like, okay, well now, it shows up, red flags up over there.
Because they didn't do it right.
You know, because it didn't do them right the first time, so.
So we appreciate that you are doing it right. So then, yes, if you're looking to expand, you do own the property that you're sitting on, so.
Well, I, we certainly appreciate your, giving this your attention.
For, for me, it won't be much.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Perfect. Well, I will get council all the language and the examples, and then we'll, we'll know something out for April. Correct.
The hearing time will be when?
Seven o'clock, so just our normal council meeting. We just do them the first thing in the agenda.
Thanks for being here tonight.
All right, anything else on the alleyways before I move on? All right. Next item on the agenda, resolution twenty-two-four dash oh six. This is an update to the community sign policy. I'll get back to my packet. We are on page fifty-two. So I met with the representative of the Lions Club a couple of weeks ago. We put this into effect in February, and then already have a lot of experience, which is what I like to learn from. And so we had some congratulatory messages that went up for our wrestling teams, as well as a local, a former Albert Net resident who wrestles for the Big Twelve. Congratulations, Big Twelve champion. And realized there was originally a requirement in, in the existing policy that the first line of the message, so there's four potential lines on the sign, that the first line identify the requesting organization. For me, that was just a consistency. You always know who put it up. For the most part, people know who to contact with those organizations. So it was, it was really just, first line's always, you know, where it came from. I'm gonna be completely transparent, there was no legal requirement for that. We have the indemnification, so it doesn't, doesn't have to be recognized who put the message up. And so in seeing those, it was very clear that it, those should look as though they're coming from the community, not necessarily just one organization. So what you have in your packet right now is an updated policy. There were the.
Kick out page fifty-two.
Sorry, I'm on my task here.
Yep, it's actually on fifty-three, page fifty-three is where we made the updates. So where it starts at the very top, messages must comply with the following specifications. So the change we made to item number one is that if it's event-related, it would still have the nonprofit name on there. And if it was for, like, anniversaries, special occasions, or accomplishments, such as the wrestling team, then that would be optional, okay? The other updates, you'll notice a new asterisk on item number two. This was just a lesson learned from utilizing the sign, that anything in all caps, if you put something in all capital letters, it reduces the characters. So we just wanted to call that out, just from an implementation standpoint. And then we updated item number three to, that originally said, messages must not exceed two side screens for a total of six lines, because the organization name was always at the top. So if you had two screens, two of those lines were for the org name, so there were six available. That's now updated to re-engage. This is what you have. This is what I came up with and put in the packet. Since then, I've given it a lot of thought. I, I don't know if we need to require the org name at all. That, that was kind of a, a me preference. I would love, I, I put this together based on looking at other people's policies and those types of things. We've learned into it. I'm happy to continue to learn into it with this small modification. But I also think, if it's an event, if it's fundraiser, they're naturally in their message gonna say who it's for. So do, do we need to dictate that? Probably not. So that's the history of the why, and whether we just make it easier to administer. Staff doesn't have to police it, because right now in the application, because we did say for all messages, we're able to grade that line out, so that the org name is always there, but in this instance, it could cause confusion, because sometimes they can use it and sometimes they can't. So do we just eliminate that, that altogether?
They want it put on there, they can put on.
Oh, oh, a hundred percent, yeah.
Well, but if you're gonna sponsor an event, you're gonna say who you are.
Yeah.
Right. But do we need in our requirement, in our policy to force it? There's no legal reason behind them. They, they signed the indemnification, so that, that covers us from the liability standpoint. So really, we have no reason to actually require it. Until I saw it in practice, it, it sounded like a great idea.
It doesn't make as much sense when you have to see it.
It's true. It's true.
Maybe we should just drop it. If the Lions Club or somebody else is gonna sponsor your event, they're gonna listen in.
Well, like I said, we already have, they sent in the paper that has the indemnification that says, this is what we put up there, we keep a log of it over here. So at any time, if anybody were to come in and question, we'll put that up there. We can pull them straight to that file and say, this is what they had, this is the group, and this is, so you can go talk to them. But this way, it becomes more of a community sign, which is.
And you've seen it, the signs and the messages, but that effectively would clean up some of the sign, sign each?
Yes, it would make it a lot easier, A, for me to put stuff up there, and B, it would make more sense. It makes more sense.
Okay.
Because that's the feedback that I keep getting, is the current way it says, it doesn't, sometimes it doesn't make sense.
Okay, it just makes it harder to get to. The message in there along with the organization's name.
Again, it looked good on paper, and then in practice, I just don't think it executed the way I, I thought it would.
Let's change it.
So again, what you have now is, is a slight change. So based on what I'm hearing from Councilor Trump, again, we can continue discussion on this. I would ask for a motion if we need to make the additional change to remove the org requirement. Just put that in the motion, so that I can make that after this meeting. So we can, we can update the policy without having to bring it back to council.
I move we adopt resolution twenty-two-four dash oh six with the additional change of omitting the requirement for the organization's name.
Perfect motion. I have a motion from Trump.
Second.
Second from West. Any further discussion on this?
Can I just say thank you?
Well, thank you for your patience. I have, I have to learn things sometimes.
We were able to get that fourth line of script because we had additional donations. This way, we're gonna be able to utilize it. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. I have to learn other things sometimes. It looked good on paper. Any discussion from council? All right, hearing none, I would seek a motion to approve. Or no, all those in favor say aye.
You say aye.
West. All those in favor, gosh, Joe?
Yep.
All those opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Chris, I already have the application mostly updated, and I will get that over to you tomorrow. All right, old business, park project update.
You have a picture?
Oh, you want a picture?
Do you have updated one?
I don't, I do. I do have an update.
You have everything you need to see.
I sometimes have everything I need to hear.
Just where is it?
Basically, right now, today, the staff and I sat down and we developed a timeline of what we're looking at as far as when we wanna implement each item. Unfortunately, we did have a small setback with the individuals that I was working with, they had quotes. The guy left. So I've now reached out to the people that he was working with, and I basically said, I need these quotes yesterday, like, I can't wait anymore. So they're gonna be getting you those new quotes for the pavilions and for the, any kind of other structures that we had out there. We do have the renderings, and we will be working with the community, the, the park committee to continue forward with this. But at this time, yeah, what we've got right now is just the renderings and trying to figure out listing of the contractors, how we wanna move forward, and that kind of thing.
So is the pavilion gonna be one of the first things up then?
Most likely, the pavilion is going to be, the pavilion and the pickleball court are like, most likely, the two things that go up first.
Possibly next year?
They could probably go up this year. We still have funds for it this year.
Business going good? Yikes.
Like I said.
But based on the quote, we don't know for sealed bid yet, right? We need depending on how the quotes come in.
And that's, that's where I'm at right now, is whether or not I have to do a sealed bid. Because I need the quotes. They know how much we can spend, and I, but I need those quotes. What I'm finding is concrete. Concrete is gonna cost us a pretty big, just to do the concrete. And we wanna continue the trail. So do we continue? That is the trail project that goes around the park. It's like I said, so this next week, Steph and I are gonna be working on kind of typing this, and I was hoping to have a PowerPoint presentation for you with a thing that would go out in your emails. And then that's when I'm gonna get the park committee involved, so that we can start solidifying some of the smaller details. So that's where we're at right now. Because we still have to decide whether or not, can we do this, or are we gonna be forced to use an engineer? So that's where we're at right now.
Any questions on the park project? All right, hearing none, that has taken us through old business. Before we move to comments, we do have two extra pages in our packet. Notice of public hearing for the proposed property tax levy. I'm not gonna step through numbers, because we'll do that next month. And then page fifty-six is a breakdown. While this isn't entirely accurate, because we know for reestimated twenty-two-four, I think our fund balance is probably gonna be a little higher than the one point four. I do like that you're able to see how we're spending the money and how that, that burned down on that fund balance a little bit. So that's the bottom two lines on page fifty-six. But we can go through that in detail at the next meeting. Chris, before we do that, I'm back up to page fifty-five, I did just have one question. What is the difference between the effective property tax and the proposed property tax? Well, because I know it used to be max levy, and so we could ask for as much as we wanted, they were gonna max us out. So which one is the one we're actually getting?
The one they give us.
Is that effective or proposed?
Ours is proposed, theirs is effective.
Okay, perfect.
My goal here was to try to get us as close as possible, so that we didn't get put on a list that would basically appease them, so that they would say, yes, you're within tolerance, based off of that last page that I showed you before, of what we're expected to get each year, and based off what they wanna get us down to. The good news is, we have been close to that and not overtaxing. So right now, we are looking really good as far as being able to please the state and skate through this and be okay, and not have to make any adjustments. I have heard word of other towns that are being told, no, you're too high, and you have to lower it, and they have to go in and redo their entire budget. So that's the consequence of not doing it correctly.
So the effective is what we would, what we would get?
So am I reading this right? We're down twenty percent?
Not really.
So the number, what we need to look at, really, is this number where, since here it says in the, the budget, your effective property was the two forty-five, five oh three?
Oh, I just lost the two forty?
Five oh three, okay. And then look at the number we're, we're going to, we're going to two forty-eight, one sixty.
Well, that's our proposed, but you're saying, but we're getting the effective.
We're getting the, we can get the effective, yes. Again, it's up to the state.
All right, well, we'll step off through all that, the public hearing, but.
But taxes didn't go up, especially.
They, no.
We're down.
If anything, they were, yeah, they were down. Yeah, keep going.
All right. Final comments. Councilor Trump?
Trump, I've got some budget going this far. And we're not in trouble with anybody. Thank you, Chris.
I try.
The tackle in the river.
Councilor Bozenberg?
Well, just thank you guys for coming today, bearing with us, and get her done.
Councilor Situp? Councilor West? Mr. Shelby?
They did say, I did get the email today that the state is preparing to send the notices to residents. That's gonna do, that's gonna show them their breakdowns. So if you get any comments from residents, what is this? You're more than welcome to send them my direction. I have a script that basically helps me talk about it. And all it really is for the audience members is the state has basically now broken down where all your taxes go. So you'll see directly which entities in your community are pulling the most taxes from, and it will, it's very detailed. So this is something that they wanted enhanced transparency on, so that will be coming soon. So just to let the community know that that's happening.
You are gonna see a new agenda. It's not necessarily an item, but confirming date and time of our next meeting. I've seen others, other committees that I'm on put this in practice. It's super nice to just have handy. I always kind of know where to go back and look. Our regular meetings, not a huge deal, but again, it just adds that transparency, and especially with the new rules around our budgeting. I don't love doing our budget stuff at special meetings, but the schedule we got from the state requires it. So our next meeting will be April first at seven P M. A special meeting for the FY twenty-five proposed property tax levy. So that on the agenda is just me trying to increase transparency on when we're meeting and why. So we'll, we'll just leave that on their standing going forward, but no action needed. With that, I would seek a motion to adjourn. Moved by Bozenberg. Second by Trump. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned at eight forty-nine P M. Thank you all.